Ladies and gentlemen of the court, we have several new preachers in town. One of those is Cody Boston, who is now preaching at Central Church of Christ. He was born in Dunlap, Tennessee, went to school in Suquatche County, graduated with a BS from Freed Hardman. He's been in ministry for eight and a half years, including youth ministry. He and his wife have twins, and so we want to welcome Cody Boston to the City of McMinnville and to our county commission meeting tonight to give our invocation.
Let's pray together. Father, we thank you for another day that you've blessed us with today. We're thankful that no matter the weather, we can still be reminded of your presence, we can be reminded of your power, and be comforted to know that you are our God and we are your people. Father, at this time, we ask that you be with this meeting, be with those involved. We pray that you bless this meeting, that the conversations will be very productive, that we can look to find ways to better our community, to help our community continue to grow and be the best that we can be. Just help us all as there are different discussions or questions or whatever may come up. I pray that everyone involved has the right heart, the right mind, and that this will be truly a productive meeting. Father, we thank you so much for prayer, to know that when we come before you, that you know our hearts, that you hear us, you are listening, and to know that you answer prayers. We're thankful to know that you're with us each day, and we're thankful to be able to enjoy the blessings of life. Father, continue to watch over all of us here, keep all these families safe, be with all those in our community who are hurting, whether it's through loss or through illness, whatever it might be, please comfort them, please provide healing for them, and help them in any way they need it, and give us wisdom to know how to help those in our community as well who might be hurting at this time. Father, we thank you for Jesus, for the perfect example he set for us. May we do our best every day to shine our lights as he gave us that example to follow so that others may see him in us and through us. Father, may you be glorified in our lives, and we again thank you for all you've done. We pray all this through Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. If you would, remain standing as we prepare for our Pledge of Allegiance.
I have asked Constable Junior Pennington to lead us in our pledge. Junior was sworn in as constable in December 2008. In addition to his service as constable, Junior worked for the Warren County Sheriff's Department for three years and two years for the McMinnville Police Department as a public safety officer. He has lived in Warren County all his life and has been married for 25 years to his wife Cindy. They reside in the 6th District. Junior has been a good friend and a big help to me over the years. He's always worked any 5K or five mile runs that we've put on downtown or in Rock Island. He's supported families in crisis by working traffic for our annual Great Bodies Car Show and Swap Meet. Junior and all our constables are unfunded volunteers. With the exception of serving papers or private security, they have to pay for everything, including their training, weapons, transportation, et cetera. We appreciate Junior and all our constables for their service to Warren County.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. all.
All right, with that, Lisa, will you call the roll, please? All right, with that, Lisa, will you call the roll, please?
Michael Bell. Michael Bell.
Here. Here.
Carl D. Bolden. Carl D. Bolden.
Here.
Here.
Carl E. Bolden. Carl E. Bolden.
Carleen Brown. Carleen Brown.
Here.
Here.
David Dunlap. David Dunlap.
Here.
Here.
Randy England. Randy England.
Here.
Here.
Deborah Evans. Deborah Evans.
Here.
Here.
Steve Blynn. Steve Blynn.
Here.
Here.
Stephen Helton. Stephen Helton.
Here.
Here.
Robert Hennessy. Robert Hennessy.
Here.
Here.
Brad Hillis. Brad Hillis.
Here.
Here.
Ron Lee. Ron Lee.
Here.
Here.
Gary Martin. Gary Martin.
Here.
Here.
Daniel Owens. Daniel Owens.
Here.
Here.
Casey Owens. Casey Owens.
Here.
Here.
Gary Prater. Gary Prater.
Here.
Here.
Scott Ruble.
Here.
Tommy Savage.
Here.
Tyrone Sparkman.
Here.
Joseph Stotts.
Here.
Phillip Stout.
Here.
Cole Taylor.
Here.
Blaine Welter.
Here.
Twenty-three present.
Twenty-three present. At this time, I'd entertain a motion to adopt the docket. We have a motion from Commissioner Stotts, a second from Commissioner Sparkman. Would anybody want to speak to that motion? If not, all in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Next item is election of chairman.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Commissioner.
I'd like to elect Blaine Welter.
We have a motion from Commissioner England. We have a second from Commissioner Helton. Anyone want to speak to that motion? If not, all in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Motion passes. Next is the reading of the minutes.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Commissioner Ruble.
Motion to approve and dispense with the reading.
We have a motion from Commissioner Ruble, second from Commissioner Stotts. Would anybody want to speak to that motion? If not, all in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Next is public comment. I believe we are down for a public comment from Trinidad Ramirez.
Mr. Chairman, I do not see him present, so he didn't contact our office today about anything, so with him not being present, I guess we have no public comment.
All right, thank you, Mr. Executive. Next item, County Executive Haley, special recognition.
It's always an honor to stand before the ladies and gentlemen of the court and give special recognition to employees or those individuals who have done exceptional service to our community. Before I recognize one employee, one former employee, and do a proclamation, I would like for Commissioner Carleen Brown to please stand up. It's always a pleasure to recognize a county commissioner who is a public servant at heart. On a recent vacation in Florida, sitting on the beach with friends, and her expertise as a former lifeguard and director of Parks and Recreation for the City of McMinnville, she stepped outside the boundaries of her duties and responsibilities when she saw an older man struggling in the waters out in the ocean without hesitation. She grabbed a noodle, threw down her hat, made her way to the water, and rescued and saved the life of a gentleman who did not know how to swim. So I think we need to recognize a true hero, hometown hero. You want to say something? I know you didn't want any recognition, you didn't want any kind of plaque or certificate, but I just thought it was, you know, you have exceptional service, not even when you're in Tennessee, so you're always giving something back. So I'd also like to recognize, and Mr. Cotton may add to this as well, you know, our finance department does an exceptional job under Director Cotton's leadership, and his employees always go the extra mile to do exceptional service to our county. Without our employees, we could not do our jobs. Without finance department, the commission could not do their job either. So it's teamwork. And so tonight, I would like to recognize one of our employees who does exceptional service, that works under the finance directors, assistant finance director, Anita Nunley. So if you would like to come forward, Mr. Cotton, would you like to say a little something, add something?
I'd just like to add that I lean heavily on Anita's expertise for all items related to payroll, and a lot of it on HR items, and my office would not function nearly as well without her.
So you want to say a little something?
Yes, I would like to thank Justin for giving me the opportunity to be able to do this, and I couldn't do it without my team, Holly Dodd, Holly Martin, and Patricia Taylor. We pay about fifteen hundred employees every month through the county, so some days are good, some days are bad, but thank you all, and thank you, Justin. And County Executive Haley, thank you.
A former employee who has since retired, has not been able to receive this recognition, and so David Williams, if you would like to come forward first, and we, as we recognize Mr. Ken Mulligan, who has served dutiful as a judicial commissioner over these many years and gone the exceptional mile in order to perform his duties as a judicial commissioner. So do you want to say a little something about Ken first, and then we'll share this?
Well, you know, Ken probably did not appreciate having to be sick and missed two months, but it sort of is very fitting. This is his anniversary month of when he was hired to be a judicial commissioner. His time as a correctional officer was before that. You know, Ken, during the COVID, worked extensive hours for about three weeks, I think about a hundred and thirty hours in two weeks for us, when everybody was sick, and his attention to detail and helping our officers matriculate out of warrant saved us from getting cases dismissed and things like that. But, you know, the biggest thing of it is, is Ken always was willing to go that extra mile for anybody that came in the office and wanted to talk to him, and, you know, I just really appreciate Ken, because without Ken and my other judicial commissioners that work under us, we would really be at a loss. And of course, Ken's meticulous things to detail ended up helping a lot within the jail too, with his time, you know, and Ken's, I just am proud to be able to say that not only is Ken a wonderful person to work with, he's a wonderful friend too. I'm slow, but I'm accurate.
I'd like to present this as special recognition for you. We appreciate your many years of service, your professionalism, and going, like I said, the extra mile each and every day that you serve this county as an employee, whether it was a correctional officer or as a judicial commissioner, so we appreciate your time of service.
Thank you very much.
I know you want to say a little something, so you say it.
I'm not good at speeches. I have to cheat a little. Starting from the beginning, I'd sort of like to thank Ken Martin. Remember him years ago calling me up and wanting to know if I'd be interested in considering a position as a judicial commissioner? Well, I told him pretty quickly that if I could pass the interviews to go through, that I would be proud, you know, to serve the community. Believe it or not, they did hire me. And Mr. Jim Hartman, he tried to give me a little training. I think I was a little hard-headed in the beginning, but it was pretty much not until I met old David Williams, y'all know him, that's when I started to get into what it took and meant to be a judicial commissioner. David was a good, good, excellent example as a judicial commissioner. He was always there when I needed any direction, and I'm proud to know him as a friend, and I'm glad that I had a great opportunity to meet our co-commissioners, which was Kevin, Lady, Mike, Susan, Wally, and of course, David. Now, I'd like to thank Mayor Jimmy and all the commissioners for this recognition tonight and for the opportunity that y'all provided for me to serve Warren County, Tennessee. Thank you very much. And if I could, I'd still be doing it.
I know you wouldn't. Most of you should have received an invitation for this Friday at Mottlo as we recognize the service of Jerry Cooper to our community and our state. So with that, I'm going to be doing a proclamation on Friday, but I thought it would be fitting and proper for me to enter into the minutes for tonight. So whereas it is only fitting to recognize the life and accomplishments of those remarkable individuals who have left their mark on their nation, their state, and their hometown, whereas every community should show tribute to those whose legacy is a testimony to a life dedicated to public service. Whereas Jerry Wayne Cooper was born on August 6, 1948, in McMinnville, Tennessee, to parents J.W. and Theonio LaFivers Cooper. Whereas Jerry Cooper was educating the local school system, earned an engineering degree from the University of Tennessee in Knoxville, and then served his nation as a member of the Tennessee National Guard from 1970 to 1976. Whereas Jerry Cooper established a successful manufacturing business at Smart Station and was honored as Small Businessman of the Year in 1983 by the U.S. Small Business Administration. Whereas Jerry Cooper served with distinction as the 14th District Senator in the Tennessee General Assembly from 1984 until 2007, and was known for his bipartisan approach to governance. Whereas Senator Cooper was recognized with many awards for his service to the state, including Legislature of the Year, Legislator of the Year, and Outstanding Senator of the Year. Whereas during his tenure with the General Assembly, Senator Cooper served as Chairman of Commerce, Labor, and Agriculture Committee, and was instrumental in passing the lottery scholarship legislation as an investment in our children's educational needs. Whereas Senator Cooper championed higher education throughout his life and was responsible for the creation of the Mottlo campus in McMinnville. And whereas Senator Cooper was a member of Alpha Phi Mu and Phi Kappa Alpha Fraternities and served on both the Tennessee Tech University and Mottlo College Foundations where he promoted expansion of those campuses and programs. Whereas Jerry Cooper was an active member in many organizations and rose to the state presidency of the J.C.'s, where he was honored with the Outstanding Young Man of the Year in 1984, and went on later to help found, count, discovery for children with skin diseases. And whereas his distinguished, this distinguished individual placed service above self in so many aspects of his life, and often sacrificed his own health and personal well-being in order to help others. Whereas Senator Cooper passed from this life on March 21, 2020, at his home here, leaving three daughters, Alyssa, Sally, and Faith, along with family members, to mourn his loss. And whereas all of Warren County should show respectful appreciation as we memorialize a man whose legacy and achievements will live on for many generations to come, therefore be it proclaimed that I County Executive Jimmy Haley, the legislative body of Warren County, and a grateful community hereby honor the memory of Senator Jerry W. Cooper and acknowledge his many contributions to our citizenry over the course of a robust life and successful political career. So thank you.
At this time, Executive, if you want to give your report.
I will. Couple of things, we will be having a presentation by Director Mark Farley about UCHRA later on, on the agenda, and there are several handouts that are on your desk as well. One, the new Tourism Magazine that's there, plus we had an ECD Listening Tour here a week and a half or so ago, and so we had people from across the state that were here in this building and presented some of the information and some of those folks that were here about programs and grants and agencies that really assist in the leveraging of resources across all the communities of the state, but particularly the Upper Cumberland. So that was spearheaded by Jody Slager from Three Star, so that's there as well. I do want to clarify something that was in my report about debt service, the debt, you know, that we have encumbered over this administration, a lot of it was encumbered by the previous administration for the jail bond that's gone on to help us get certification. The additional debt that was there, I think I said $200,000 in savings, but we refinanced two notes and with almost $150,000 rebate, it saved the county $450,000 over the course of that. And then the other bond issue, of course, was the ESG performance-based bonds that we issued as well. And so with Scott Gibson saying that we're in pretty good shape, and as we go down the road in two or three years, we might be able to afford a bigger project, either for the schools or for the county, so I did want to clarify that. Any other questions about my report?
Yes, Commissioner Stotts.
The Development District, Mr. Farley's here also, but they have the Small Business Development Center within the Development District, and they were already in charge of handling stimulus money and vetting those loan applications that were previous, so they have the tools to do it. There's going to be a lot of accountability on the part of the county on who we allot funds to, and so the final rule has not been given on the monies either. And so we've been in webinars, we've got another one on Wednesday, we've got one Thursday with the Controller's Office as well, trying to clarify some of those. The process is going to be, we'll run the process of who we're giving money to through committee, it will go through the committee channel. We have to have a public hearing, it'll be voted on by the full commission as to where that money is going to be allotted, but the process on the final rule and what is going to be allowed and not allowed has yet to be determined by the U.S. Treasury Department.
All right, we have a motion to accept the report, second from Commissioner Helton. Anyone want to speak to that motion? If not, all in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, next is Finance Department report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ladies and gentlemen of the court, you have my report. If you have any questions, I'll do my best to answer them at this time.
Motion from Commissioner Helton, second from Commissioner Ruble. Anyone want to speak to that motion? If not, all in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Next is Warren County Memorial Airport Quarterly Report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
The only thing that I have to add is we added about $10,000 worth of sales in the past 12 days. You all have my report, I'll take any questions.
Motion to accept from Commissioner Stout, second from Commissioner Stotts. Anyone want to speak to that motion? If not, all in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item is the Codes and Environmental Quarterly Report. Mr. Rich Thompson.
Mr. Chairman, members of the court, you have a copy of my report. I'll be glad to answer any questions at this time.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Commissioner Bolden.
I have a question that's not related to your report, but did you inspect the property in my district on the corner of Short Mountain Road and Yeager Road today?
Yeah, I drove by there and took a look at it. The last time, the last time we had a complaint on it was in 2016. There was letters sent out about the overgrown vegetation, the, there was cooking oils that were out back that was turned over to the state groundwater. It has, since the last time I drove by it, it's been burnt out. I'm not sure when that took place. As far as what can be done about it, from what I understand, there's more liens and stuff against it. I know it's on the tax roll as far as delinquent taxes. We can reach out to the people, but, you know, the ordinances that we have adopted basically say that, and it says it's not mandatory for the county to apply this ordinance, but once you go in and you state that a property is not safe, it pretty much puts the county in a liability position. And seeing that I haven't got, I haven't received any other complaint on it since 2016. I've had people ask me about what's going on with it, but I haven't had anybody do a formal complaint on it.
Okay, I think I talked a little bit about this microphone, but I've been in conversation with Mr. Bratcher over this, and I gave him some codes and stuff about planning. It does, when it first starts this, when you, but then our county executive said last month that we didn't have any codes, and there's some other people that's contacting you. His office was, they should have been contacting your office, and he said, well, this is the same thing, we don't have any codes, but we actually do. Therefore, they think that they have made resolutions to establish a position that you have now, and the job description, the procedures, and the penalties for non-occupies was passed, and TCA Code 5-1-115, which I understand from Mr. Bratcher, who's been laboring on it, that it's actually got some strong words in it now. But it also, in the Public Charter number 595, Senate Bill number 1265, it also defines criminal delivery and other, it's different types of criminal living in reference to refuge and roost, but here is something that I highlighted on this, it says, if it is determined by the appropriate department or person, and this is, when you Google you Google "building," warrencountytendy.gov, "building and environmental code," this is what you find. "If it is determined by the appropriate department or person, as designed by the government body of the county, that any owner of record of real property that created, maintained, or permitted to be maintained of such property, the growth of trees, vines, grass, underbrush, or the accumulation of debris, trash, dirt, rust, or any combination of the preceding elements or a vacant, ill-acaduated building or structure, so as to endanger the health, safety, or welfare of other citizens, or to encourage the infestation of rats or other harmful items, the appropriate department or person shall provide notice to the owner of record to remedy the condition immediately." And in C, that's B, in C it says, "If the person fails or refuses to remedy the condition within 10 days after receiving the notice, the appropriate department or person shall immediately call the condition to be remedied or removed at the cost of the company with reasonable standards and the cost thereof assessed against the owner of the property. The cost shall be a lien upon the property in favor of the county." Also, I talked with Congressman Scott Davis' office, and this, there's liens over property and stuff, that carries no weight whatsoever according to that office. The liens are not against the property, they're against the person that owns the property. It's against, as Mr. Bradshaw told me, it's actually against the social security. So, they said that when you make notice to the, when you make notice of the sale, that the IRS departments walk in and over the money is distributed. And actually, according to the dates that I found, where everything was filed, Warren County, the, the tax delinquency, it was on the document January the 16th. That was the first action taken against them. Everything else happened after 2016. And the purchase of the promissory note was actually happened in December, I believe it was, in 2016. But this, this right here gives you permission to go up there and clean that place up.
Right.
So, the owner on record, we know who the owner of record is as of right now, so if they own it. And I won't tell you what people in my community would want to find out.
The, the, the whole thing with this is, and it was explained to me when I first took this job, is that once you call out something as being hazard to public safety, and it states in here that the county, basically if they don't do it within 10 days, the county has to come step in and, and clean it up and take care of it, we don't have anybody to do that. We don't have the, the funds or the department or, or anything to do that. So, basically, it kind of puts me in a dilemma where if I set somebody for this, it could put, it, it basically places the county in a position of liability and, you know, once it doesn't get taken care of.
Well, that property up there fits everybody in this place.
I know. I know it does.
And there's actually, there's no way to be set up there, you see, two years, I hear it actually since it's been delinquent on taxes. There's no way you can set up there that long and not be something.
I'm, I'm open, I'm open to whatever legal way we can do it. I mean.
It's in here, it can be done, it can be contracted out or whatever, and then the lien's put against that property. You may not retrieve that money back, but we're always talking about tourism and beautifying our county. You drive out back there and see how pretty that is.
Tell me where to direct, to, to, to tell her to go clean it up, and I'll be glad to do it.
Director Thompson's correct in saying that if we get a complaint, we get a finding that we've got to do a cleanup, we do have to clean it up, and we're going to have to find some fund for that or some other mechanism by which he can accomplish that. So, that's correct, and we'll, we'll have to find a way to pay for all this. But you're right, it's something we do have the authority to do. The statute clearly states that it's something we can do. We get a complaint, we go out and look at the property, issue a citation to the owners, they don't respond, 10 days passes, and then it has to be cleaned up. So, it can be done.
It just got me to write it on my phone.
Yeah, it does.
Commissioner Hilton.
Could we utilize, I mean, the different departments of sanitation and, and maybe Levy Glenn's office? I mean, I know he's got some of the equipment to help clean some of that up. I mean, is that a possibility?
Well, you referred to finance about that. Highway Department runs its own operation there. He doesn't have to do it if he doesn't want to do it. Sanitation, maybe. I don't, you know, I don't really know if I can answer that because I haven't seen it. I don't know what's out there. It's been a while since I've driven by, maybe in the spring. I don't know what it looks like today. I mean, after Rich has had a chance to look at it and make a citation, he could probably more ask, tell us exactly what it's going to be.
Well, we're going to ask, we're going to let them know. You go from there, get an idea of what it's going to cost. Sure, the county will come up with enough money to have it cleaned up.
On this particular, right, but then you get into what happens when the next person calls up.
Well, we're going to have a lien against it. We already have with the taxes.
Right.
So, we'd have two liens against it, and we would be the first to get our money back.
Potential, yeah. I mean, if it brings enough, if it brings enough at a sale, I mean, it's already gone to a sale, had no bid.
But, you know, I run in the same situations with people calling up about old mobile, you know, old trailers and stuff that have been abandoned and on properties on a half acre lot, you know, that, you know, once we start down that road, then we're going to pretty much have to do it on every case. I just want to make sure that, you know, you're, the county's ready for that if we go down that road.
When, when this resolution was passed, there should have been somewhat figured out about the, 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 but this, this is a block building, it's pretty far out, had a bunch of fires over there.
Right, or this is one building. There's a lot, a lot of other buildings like it in the county.
We'll start with that one.
All right.
Director, would that be something that our trustees could go out and clean up, you know, the fire saving, just for, for? Not this. It makes the, don't do it. I'm sure the county can come up with the money. I mean, we, we don't have no problems coming up with money in other areas, so I'm sure we could find the money somewhere. We would have two liens against our property taxes and what we call not the mechanic slings. If you owe them a penny for work you got on the vehicle, that company that he finances his car through bank or whatever, they have to pay that guy before they can get their money. I mean, it's the same thing. We would have the number one, basically the number one lien, cleaning up the property and the taxes, that's the liquid loan.
This lien attaches as a tax lien. It, it's subsequent to any governmental tax liens, but it attaches it in the same nature as a tax lien.
I understand where you're coming from about the expense of the stuff, but this has been an eyesore for a long time. It's a major eyesore, and people, I don't know why it was done in it, but there's people in it, and it's got a baby on it, and it's a black eyesore.
Yeah, I understand.
Commissioner Sparkman.
I may need to set up a yard sale in front of it.
Commissioner Sparkman.
Yeah, I've got a question. I've got the same problem. I have on number eight.
How much one?
I've got about, you're supposed to say six vehicles? I've got about 12 out there on the BNA market right there. And, and I, yeah. And you, you told me that you've sent a letter a couple of times. Well, it's getting worse than what it was now. I don't think the letters will work.
Commissioner Stotts.
Just for clarification purposes, so you just mentioned that this property, very property, been in tax sale already, is that correct?
Yes.
I'm just trying to clarify, is in, is that a, maybe a summary, your references that were trying to get back into another tax sale.
Well, it's currently delinquent on taxes, so it's in the process of getting into the next sale. It, it's running through the system. The last tax sale that it was in, as an eligible purchase, there were no bids on it.
Good record told me it was scheduled to be in the next tax sale.
Right, it, we're looking about spring of 2022 is when that's going to happen, maybe a little earlier, depends on how the procedure goes with the courthouse, but it's going to be in the next tax sale unless something happens in between now and then. It's also going under a priceable closure.
In the definition of step, procedure, part, commercial, virtue, person, property, obviously, there's no, there's still things on the ground, so. There's no fuel tax, right? That was a point that I made several years ago.
Yeah, if there are certain environmental hazards, it changes the way county chooses to purchase property or not. You have to make findings that you are going to accept environmental hazards. And I, I don't know the steps to this particular property, but if the tax had been pulled up, it's just going to be considered as a purchase property.
They would come to a right of improvement.
Motion to approve report. Motion to approve the report from Commissioner Hilton, second from Commissioner Bell. Anyone else want to speak to that motion? If not, Commissioner Ruble. Please use your microphones. They're having a hard time hearing everyone.
Just to clarify, I think the important point that Mr. Thompson is trying to make is the fact that, yes, it's not going to be very expensive to clean up this property, but once we do this and the public, it comes in the public eye that they're going, we're going to have another property, as Mr. Sparkman said, and another property, and another property, and I don't know if the county will be able to absorb, but once we set that precedent, that, and I think that's the message that Mr. Thompson was trying to convey. Thank you.
Any other comments? If not, all in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Next is the MA Quarterly Report. Mr. Jim Cunningham.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, you have my report, and if you have any questions, I'll try to answer them.
Move to adopt. Motion from Commissioner Ruble, second from Commissioner Stout. Anyone want to speak to that motion? If not, all in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Thank you, Jim. Next is EMS Quarterly Report, Mr. Preston Denny.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen of the court. Y'all should have a copy of our report. Be happy to answer any questions.
Move to adopt. Motion from Commissioner Lee.
Second.
Second from Commissioner Stout, Stotts. Anyone want to speak to that motion? If not, all in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, Industrial Development Board Quarterly Report, Mr. Don Alexander.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, commission members. Have a copy of my report. I'll try to answer any questions you might have.
Commissioner Ross.
Yes, Mr. Alexander, I have a question about the Elan property. I'm curious to see, ask you the last meeting that you're here in your last quarterly report. I want to check to see if that property is still landlocked, if there's an easement to it yet. It was purchased almost four years ago, and I want to see where we stand on that.
Now, the way I understand landlocked is it has no access. It has access. It's Ballpark Road runs right there to it, so it's never been landlocked.
Do you have easements to it then?
I don't have to have an easement. When it's on the road, I don't, I mean, we're still working on better access and rail spur.
Uh huh. Yes. Do you have any work in the state yet about the road and if that's, and the state can play for it?
We have met on that just today, and so it continues. Yes, it's, it's a long, as we mentioned when we purchased this, it's a long-term investment that we've made for, to create jobs for Warren County people. So, we, we continue to work on it as we go, yes. But it, you know, it, it can be a very favorable site. The, one of the factors that we looked at in this, other than it being close to the interstate and, and having a lot of features such as it being flat and, and good for what looks like development, is that we could get a rail spur into it. That was one of the factors that the State of Tennessee Department of Economic and Community Development said that they needed at this point, that most of the, this, the rail sites over time had been, been utilized by industries. So, this is one of those that we feel like would make a good investment for us, for our children and grandchildren down the road, and continue to work on that. It still has many, many possibilities, and it's going to require a lot of hard work. Does that answer your question?
It does, somewhat. Also, any news on the hotel, the opening day on that?
I don't have anything other than he, the owner is trying to get the certificate of occupancy, and once he obtains that, he tells me that within two weeks after that, he wants to open up. As you can tell, it continues to, to work. It looks really good out there, I think, and today I noticed that they did deliver nursery products to it, so. I, I think the community ought to be excited that we're, we're, we're close on that, and it will be a real asset to our community. Hope we all support it.
I have a question.
Go ahead, Commissioner Brown.
You also had written in your report, there were two residential builders that had come and looked at two possible areas for building houses. Can you share with that, those, what they were and a little bit more about that?
They didn't release me to, to really tell who they were. I'll just tell you that they are builders that have experience and have built a number of houses in the middle, middle Tennessee area, have looked at us, and, and one has contacted us within, basically within the last two weeks of looking at a possibility of purchasing. So, it's pretty exciting. We need, need some housing in that particular price point range, and, you know, it's, it's one of those where it's a private individual at, at this point, and, and I, I don't feel comfortable in saying anything more other than that, but it looks positive for us that we could, we could have a middle strata of, of price range in this area that's, that there seems to be a void for it right now. I'll have to post you later on.
All right, we had a motion from Commissioner Stout to approve the report, a second from Commissioner Hilton. Anyone else want to speak to that? If not, all in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Thank you, Don.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Next, UT TSU Extension Quarterly Report, Ms. Hilda Lado.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Ladies and gentlemen of the commission, you have a copy of my report. If you have any questions, I'll try to answer them at this time.
We have a motion from Commissioner Stotts, second from Commissioner Sparkman. Anyone want to speak to that motion? If not, all in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next we have committee reports. First is Budget and Finance.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have nothing to report at this time.
Thank you. Next is Building and Grounds. Commissioner Bolden. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Commissioner Hennessy.
Good evening, everybody. The wrong Mr. Bolden. I did speak to Carl today. He's doing much better. He's on the mend. It's just a slow process, so everybody keep him in your thoughts and prayers, please. But it's a lot of exciting news going on with the Building and Grounds Committee, of course, with Darling's Drive Thru that's coming right along. Looks like we're going to be on time and be on schedule. The concrete has been poured. That was a big win for Warren County to have the concrete versus asphalt because it's more durable, less maintenance, stable, and it's complete. And the cost to do that in comparison was a, a home run hit for us, so that was a, a big win. Bank PAC was supposed to be here today, but I don't know within climate weather, they were here today, so that's moving forward, and I believe that's close to the final phase of construction, so it should be wrapping up pretty soon, weather permitting, and some other ground maintenance areas. The front of the building that we've talked about before, it looks like that's moving forward. That's going to be a lot better access for, for the community and the people that visit our, our facility here, and I'd like to thank the Building and Grounds Committee and their work and their efforts and all the things that we've been able to accomplish in a short amount of time. I can't stop but to mention also at the courthouse with Mr. Britton's help and his company and Cassie's office, Myra's office, we are moving forward with that to secure some good shelving, make it a lot safer, and to utilize the facility and space as it should be and help those people out as they need on a daily basis. That's all we have to report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hennessy. Yes, Commissioner Savage.
Commissioner Hennessy, about the owning, what's a word on that?
Are you talking about for Darling's office? I mean, not, not her office, but Drive, it's up.
Thank you. All right, next, back to Carl D. Bolden for Economic and Agriculture Development. Sorry about that.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have nothing to report at this time.
All right. Next is Education. Commissioner Brown.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to report from Director Swallows that they felt like they had a very good day today, returning back from a four-day week in the fair week, and so that, that was a very positive report. And at our last meeting, we went over COVID updates, and there's been some changes, which are all on the website of the school, of the Warren County School Systems webpage. If you wanted to have a copy of that, where you could review it. But he also reported to and, and gave us a handout of all the upcoming school board meetings. If, in case you might have missed it, school board meetings are now going to be at different locations, and the September one is September the 27th at Centertown Elementary, but they're taking them around to all the schools, so they, you know, they would have an But they're taking them around to all the schools, so they, you know, they would have an opportunity to meet some of the staff there, and get a direct report from each principal. And then the most important thing, the school system did finally get all the requirements for the application for the $18.2 million money that was, has, had been allocated to Warren County. It has been totally completed, submitted, and it was four major categories, and we are still yet to get an answer on how, which portions are approved and the allocation of that money. But we're, but the other school systems, we have received word that they are starting to get theirs approved, so we, we should hear very soon about that. And that is all I have to say, thank you.
Thank you. Next is Financial Management. County Executive Haley.
Nothing really new to report, except we'll be coordinating with Budget and Finance and Director Cotton on scheduling our next financial management meetings.
Thank you. Speaking for Health and Welfare Committee, I would like to remind everybody that we are still working through this tethering and shelter resolution, or resolutions, and probably be speaking more on that later. But it is my intent to bring it through the committee and to the Commission for a vote, hopefully in the next month or so. Next, Highway and Bridge. Commissioner Prater.
We have nothing to report at this time.
Next is Legislative. Commissioner Brown.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Tonight, there will be a reappointment of committees, and then also reappointment of chairman for all the committees. And if you know that once a year, the Legislative Committee will be reviewing our rules and procedures regulating our commission, one of the things that we will need to do is review, also in that manual, the responsibilities of each committee. So whoever the upcoming chairman are, if it's the same ones, or we have new ones, at your October meeting, please take time to review that, because in November, the Legislative Committee will be meeting to review the document and to update any changes necessary. Is that clear? Did I make that clear? Okay, good. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, Policy and Personnel. Commissioner Savage.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have one judicial commissioner that's going to be out for a few weeks for heart procedure, and he's been there a long time, done a great job, Wally McLaren. But it's, it's good that we got two new ones last month, so that he, they can help take up the slack. So other than that, I have nothing else to report. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Next is Safety. Commissioner Ron Lee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Our bids for our new ambulance remount will be coming in on October the 6th. And our first Monday night meeting would be the 4th. I'd like to ask Executive Haley if we could have our safety committee meeting the 11th or 12th. Now, the 11th is Columbus Day, are we going to be open? So the... Huh? We will be, so I'd like to have the safety committee to meet on the 11th at 5:30 in Law and the Finance Room. And that way we can get this process voted on, and maybe ahead of you fellows at Finance for you to help us along, okay? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, County Corrections Partnership. Commissioner Stouts.
County Corrections Partnership has nothing to report at this...
Thank you. And last, Redistricting Committee. Commissioner England.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Redistricting Committee met last Tuesday night to get the process started with the, getting the redistricting going of our 12 districts here in Warren County. We have basically turned that over to Chuck Hastings, as he is our tech savvy person, as I call him, and he has had a meeting with State on Thursday, which we were given the software, and he'll be able to move it. We are, I guess you guys read the paper and what have you, but we are going to have to shift some of the boundaries a little bit to stay within compliance. So we'll be meeting again and probably several more times, but our next meeting is the 30th, which I believe is next Thursday night, and we will meet at 5 o'clock. And then as time goes on, when we get a final copy, we will have a public hearing, or viewing, I guess you could say of that, as time. But we do have a deadline of trying to get this done as early as we can and before December, hopefully. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. With no unfinished business, I would ask for a 10-minute recess, and I will pass out the committee appointments that I recommend, so that you'll have time to look over them before we go into new business. I'll start the 10-minute recess now. At this time, Mr. Ken Mulligan has a few more words to share with us.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I wrote my, what I told you earlier, out in the parking lot. And I left out a very special fellow, and I apologize for that, is Mr. Tommy Savvy, is one of the commissioners. He worked with me when I was going through the medical issues that I was going through, and I just wholeheartedly appreciate you, and I want to say thank you. That's, thank you, sir.
Thank you. All right, I believe everybody is back, so we will get into new business. Item number one is elect chairman pro tempore and parliamentarian.
Mr. Chairman, I wanted to remind everybody once again to speak into their microphones, the sound guy, they're not being able to hear us on TV.
Thank you.
We don't speak into microphones.
Thank you. And before you go any further, I do want to mention, if you've looked over the list, I do have financial management included in this, but that is a separate committee that will be voted on separately, I just want everybody to understand that. Commissioner Bell.
I'll make a motion for pro tem Scott Ruble.
Second.
We have a motion from Commissioner Bell, second from Commissioner Brown, for Scott Ruble to be reelected as pro tem. Anyone want to speak to that? If not, all in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, on that note, I would like to nominate Michael Bell as parliamentarian.
Second.
We have a motion from Commissioner Ruble, and a second from Commissioner Stouts to elect Michael Bell, Commissioner Bell, as parliamentarian. Anyone want to speak to that? If not, all in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. All right. Item one is done. Item number two, appoint standing committees.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Ruble.
I make a motion that we accept the list as presented.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, second.
Okay, we have a motion from Commissioner Ruble to accept the list as written, and a second from Commissioner Hennessy. Anyone want to speak to that? If not, all in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Next item is to, item number three, to appoint Financial Management Committee. You have my suggestion in the list.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Commissioner Brown.
I make a motion to accept your recommendation for Financial Management Committees.
All right, we have a motion to accept my recommendation from Commissioner Brown, second from Commissioner Ruble. Anybody want to speak to that? If not, all in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. All right. Next is the appointments to Disciplinary Review Board. Executive Haley.
I think you got the list that was sent by the sheriff, I thought somebody from there was going to add on whether Mr. Lee has seen that list or not, but we've got to add that list and read those names, Lisa, I guess, into the minutes for the, or do we not?
Yes, please.
It's Chief Deputy James Ramsey, Major Jason Walker, Captain Jody Cavanaugh, Investigator Jason Rowland, Programs Director Jackie Rackley, Office Manager Warrants Clerk Hillary Neal, Senate Management Clerk Tracy Knowles, and Commissary Clerk Mary Benbaumel.
So that was the list that was submitted and recommended by the sheriff and his departments.
I so moved.
We have a motion from Commissioner Lee. Second from Commissioner Glenn. Anyone want to speak to that motion? If not, all in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Item number five... Yes, Commissioner Helton.
We have not elected chairman of each committee, don't we normally do that, right after we appoint the committees?
Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, I believe you're right, Commissioner Helton.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Bolden.
I'd like to make a motion that since the committees weren't changed at all, that each chairman assign the next meeting at the very first meeting, everyone elect their chairman at that meeting.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion from Commissioner Bolden, second from Commissioner Prater, for the committees to set their, their chairman at their next meeting. Anyone want to speak to that?
I have a question, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Commissioner Ruble.
Who will set the date for the next meeting?
The previous, the previous chairman. Any other questions? Commissioner Stouts.
You'll have to ask the sheriff to clarify that, as far as the statement is, I know they, they do meet. I know they do meet fairly regularly, but that'll be a question for the sheriff to answer.
All right, back on the motion and the second. For the chairman to be selected at the next meeting of each committee. All in favor say aye. Aye, any opposed? Thank you, sorry that we missed that. All right. Back on to item number five, appointments to the planning commission.
I think you had those two names sent out with the docket packet. And so from the planning commission, you're recommending that Greg Brock and Brent Foster be reappointed to the planning commission.
I saw a move.
I have a motion from Commissioner Lee, a second from Commissioner Stout. Anyone want to speak to that? If not, all in favor say aye. Aye, any opposed? Thank you. Next is Magnus Library Board of Trustee Appointments.
Yes, I'd like to, if the chairman would look to recognize McQuarter, who's the chairman of the trustees.
Yes, sir.
To explain that.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the court. We recently got notification from the state of Tennessee that they're requiring all libraries to comply with the board tenure regulations and to gain approval of all appointments to the boards from the local funding authority, which is the county court. You have in your packet the new trustee rotational schedule that complies with this regulation. Just explaining the packet, and first I would like to make a correction. In the second list, it's not Rachel Hunter Chastain, it's Paige Chastain for the record. But you will see before you the current board of trustees that are rolling off. The five that are rolling off as of the end of the month are Pat Bigby, who served as chairman for 25 years, Trevor Galligan, Rachel Killebrew, to you to approve. I will be rotating off next June. Ernest Smallman will be rotating off next June. And Gene Marsh will be rotating off, so we will have a whole new board at that point. But it's completely your authority now under the state of Tennessee to appoint this board. Be glad to answer any questions.
Motion to approve the list.
We have a motion from Commissioner Hilton, a second from Commissioner Glenn. Anyone want to speak to that motion? If not, all in favor say aye. Aye, any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you very much, and we do appreciate the MOE that you gave us and the city increased their amount too. We were able to raise all employees above $8 an hour, which is a big step for us. So thank you very much for all you do for the library.
All right, next is item number seven, COVID-19 policy and procedures.
Move to adopt.
We have a motion to adopt from Commissioner Ruble. We have a second from Commissioner Dunlap. Anyone want to speak to that motion?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Bolden.
Oh, the Family First Coronavirus Response Act expired December of 2020. And any tax incentive to continue this expired March 31st of this year, 2021. I have checked since the policy and personnel meeting. I've checked, and I have yet to find any government agency. There's none in Morin County. Even the school system is not doing this. Private industry, I haven't found any private industry that is still going with this FFC RA to where they provide 80 hours or any COVID pay other than sick pay, sick days. I also checked, the county provides 12 sick days a year. I Googled it. I hope this is accurate count, but the national average for sick days is 5.2. 3.9 for personal sickness and 1.3 for family members that are sick, which equals 5.2. So they have seven extra days on the average that you would carry over that could be used for this. But we talked about that they were all kind of choices. This has been extended for nine more months in this policy at 80 hours. The school system is not receiving this pay. The city has done away with this pay. Private industry has done away with it. It is time for Americans to go back to work, to do the best they can, and to work with what they have. And I make a motion that there is no, no pay for being quarantined.
I second that motion.
Yeah, there's already a motion on the floor. A motion to adopt it. So are you wanting to amend the motion?
That policy that there will be no 80 hours pay.
Is that possible, Robert, to take that part out?
Legally, yes, however, you've got complexity problems when you have a very large policy like this. So just removing one sentence out of it, there's going to be inherent contradictions in the language of this. They'd better answer that, but we've got a section here for the thing, so we calculate a physical calendar, not the 80 hours. So if you strike that sentence out, you know, the question, how is it going to be effective in that form?
David, if you would.
I mean, the big issue here is whether or not we offer a benefit to our employees that are either in contact with positive COVID results or have COVID themselves. So obviously, the wording can be changed if need be. We just chose to try to extend the benefit to our employees. We did make some adjustments to some of the activity that was required in order to be eligible for the benefit to try to tighten up as I think you had recommended our last month when we were together. So we tried to address some of that. But the 80-hour pay issue was just trying to stay with the language that was started with this group and trying to maintain a level of benefit for our employees as we go through this.
Mr. Chairman, I've got a question for Mr. Britton.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
Mr. Britton, if I'm clear on this, and this may be from Mr. Bratcher, but a vote no for this would eliminate the COVID policy altogether. Is that correct?
Commissioner Bolden.
So are you saying that the most feasible way would be to vote this down instead of making the adjustment that I suggested?
Well, perhaps. I mean, there's a lot of ways it could be done. Shorten the degree of time to which this is effective. And what I mean by that is not 80 hours, but this could only be extended for a month. That'd be one way to shorten it. If you want to reduce it to 80 hours, it would be difficult to just use that language because most of the states are on a 10-day maximum period.
What I'm proposing is, is that if someone quarantines or they have COVID, they use their sick days that's allotted to them, that's four sick days. So do I need to withdraw that motion and we just vote on the one that's at hand? I'll withdraw my motion and we'll vote on what's at hand.
We withdraw the motion to amend the original motion, which is to, yes, we're withdrawing the emotion, the motion to amend the original motion, which is to adopt. We have a motion and a second.
I have a discussion question.
Yes, Commissioner Brown.
This was carried before the personnel committee. Can we hear from them, or the chairman, or comments on how you came about accepting this policy and your recommendation to bring it to the full commission tonight?
Commissioner Savage.
That, a year and a half ago, never did come through the policy and personnel. That was, that was an emergency policy. We didn't know how long this was going to last. We didn't know how long it was going to take for people to get over it. We still don't. You know, one person can get it, it's like Commissioner England got it, didn't even know he had it. You know, another person gets it and they die. This is not changed. A family member of mine is a doctor, and, and I mean, they're absolutely swamped. And it is deadly serious. And I think the two weeks or 10 days off is a little bit much, but I wouldn't do away with it completely. You know, if you force somebody to come back too quick, they come back and they infect somebody else and they die. You know, this, it gets to where it's sort of like saying, we're going to put a price tag on this. You know, and that's the, it's not the money issue that bothers me. You know, I thought I could go with cutting the 10 days back, but I wouldn't want to do, do away with them altogether. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Yes, Commissioner Evans.
I just have a point. First of all, I want to commend our employees. Our county employees are the best we have. We should have a lot to be thankful for. And I think from what I understand in the meeting that the, the issues that people could take off and it not be accurate, accurate, it was addressed. But my point is, someone can be quarantined more than once. And if we do away with the 80 hours, I know everyone needs their paycheck. Everyone pretty much lives paycheck to paycheck. And if we do away with that, then we are going to have people coming to work. Like Mr. Savage, Commissioner Savage said, people who have COVID or their family members have COVID. And as Commissioner Savage said, our hospital workers are overwhelmed already. They are begging for our support. So I, I feel like we should keep it myself due to that.
Commissioner Savage.
I'll, I'll give a brief copy of the minutes. The motion was made by Commissioner Glenn to recommend the safety coordinator, David Britton, make changes to the COVID policy, whether it shall be a fiscal or calendar year and whatever test is accepted and whatever quarantine is recommended to be voted on at the county commission meeting in September. And at that time, we, we also voted to leave the current COVID policy as written as of that date. Thank you.
Commissioner Owens.
Mr. Bratcher. If we vote no and we let this expire, we do not, we will not be operating under any policy then?
Commissioner Hilton.
Unfortunately, I was unable to attend the policy and personnel committee due to COVID. I just went through that and had to get the infusions and everything. And I understand that it's a very real disease that it put me on my back for, for two and a half weeks. Being self-employed now, I didn't get that paycheck. And I realize that it puts a strain on the family and stuff of that nature, but I do feel like we need to be fair across the board. And if, if our school system doesn't have that system, and McMinnville City doesn't have it, and others don't have it, I think we need a uniform thing. In our last meeting, there was a, last full court meeting, we actually met with, I met with a supervisor out in the parking lot. And the question was, has this been abused? Has this policy been abused? And they assured me that this policy has been abused, that they've had employee that has, has done it multiple times. And they felt that, that it was abused, and I'm not going to name any departments or anything of that nature. Saying that, we also had the largest community event, the Warren County A&amp;L Fair this last week. And just looking at the attendance at that, we had one of the, some of the largest nights ever. Of course, weather was a bad thing that sort of slowed it down a little bit, but the people, I think, are ready to get back to a normal. And with that, I just feel like that, you know, the companies, the school in McMinnville, all having the same policy. I feel like it's time to get back to normal. And me, as a self-employed person, I didn't get a paycheck. And so I feel like it's been abused and we need to, we need to vote it no.
Mr. Britton.
Mr. Chairman, one of the issues is, you know, the state and the CDC guidelines now are requiring that you wait three to five days before you're tested. That's a mandatory deal. Our department managers have a hard time dealing with that when they have to tell an employee to go home or stay at home for that three to five days before they're tested. I think the policy changes gets into the fact that if they're retested at that five days and it's negative, then they come back to work and we would reimburse those three to five days that we have forced them to stay at home. That's one of the changes that we made with this particular policy. It's, you know, and I'll just tell you, that's in direct conflict with what some of the departmental managers want to do. But we have some legal obligations of what to do. We tried to tighten up on some of the testing, not going with the rapid testing. Because as we know, many of you in this room know that intensive test, to try to put some more parameters around it to prevent those from, you know, if there have been abuse, I haven't been made aware of that, but people are people, okay? But at the same time, we tried to put a few parameters around it to tighten it down a little bit. You know, and if somebody says, I'm not going to be tested, then they're not going to get paid. That's what the policy says. So it tries to meet kind of a halfway point of all the requirements that we're trying to meet from a county perspective.
I have a question, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Bolden.
Oh, one question about this. It says three to five days. So if they wait five days, because it says three to five, they wait five days, and then it takes three to five days to get the results back, they got eight days already. And you're, and if they come back negative, they are, they are paid for those eight days, right?
That's the way it's written.
So they've already used 64 hours of the 80.
That's correct.
For a negative.
That's correct.
But, and I'm not promoting, I hate to say this because I don't want it to make it sound like I'm promoting the vaccine because I'm not. I've not taken it and I have no intentions of it at this point in time. I may change my mind, right or wrong. If you've taken it, that's fine. And if you haven't, that's fine. I'm, I'm good either way. But if you have taken it and you work for the county, you don't have to quarantine if you're exposed.
That's correct. And those, those guidelines are in there.
So it would be possible to reword this to where if you quarantine, and you quarantine for three to five days, and then you take that test and you're positive, then you get paid for it. But if you're negative, you come back to work with no pay because you had the opportunity not to quarantine. And I'm not trying to promote the vaccine.
If you were already vaccinated.
Yes, but that's your choice. I, okay, I've chosen not to be. So I would have to quarantine. If I get exposed, I can't come in here to this meeting.
That's right.
But if I had a vaccine, I can put a mask on and I can come in here.
That's correct.
So. And why do we have the obligation that we have to do this when the city and the school system doesn't?
No, I'm not saying you have an obligation to have to do it.
I, I thought you just said that, man, go that we had the obligation to do this.
No, I'm saying we have an obligation to do the three to five day period that the CDC is recommending that we do. And we don't have an obligation to continue pay. That's strictly a decision by this body. The, the department heads have said they would prefer that their employees continue to have some level of benefit, whatever that level is, you know, that they just hate to, because in some cases, they force somebody to go home who would want to stay, but because they've not been vaccinated and we don't have a positive or a negative result on them, the CDC says we're supposed to send them home. And they hate to force them to lose pay in that situation, to your point, to where after the three days, they may be tested and find that they're negative and they can come back to work. That's just what, you know, the department managers have shared with me of what they would prefer to do.
Commissioner Hilton.
Obviously, you know, COVID's ever evolving and we may, I may have to turn around and eat my words tomorrow with, you know, strand X, whatever it is. But what exactly is the school system doing in this scenario? What policies do they have with the COVID or pay or teachers exposures and that type of stuff right now?
I think Carl covered that earlier. They don't continue any benefits.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Commissioner Lee.
One question I'd like to have. If we vote, vote it down no, that means we won't be extending. But if we vote it yes, when does the extension quit? Are we, you know what I mean?
The way it's written currently is the end of next June.
It'd be, it'd be next year, I hope. Thank you.
It says it's reviewed every three months, but that it would be in effect until June 30th of 2022, unless we choose.
So you're saying we could review this three months from now?
Yes.
And see how the numbers are?
Yes.
But right now, our numbers are high, there's no doubt. But right now, our numbers are high, there's no doubt. Thank you.
Commissioner Evans.
I'd like to say.
Mr. Chairman.
I'd like to say. That's okay. Um, I, I really can't speak about what the school system does. But my husband works for the city and they do have this. They have not done away with it.
Commissioner Bell, go ahead.
My husband, sitting in the audience, has been paid. Our son was exposed and we had to wait until his tests came back. Oh, and he was paid. So that is not completely true.
Commissioner Bell, go ahead.
We had an employee that just took fourteen days off because his wife and his son both, he had to use his sick days.
Okay, alright. Okay. Okay. Commissioner Price.
Mr. Chairman, we need to do something right here. We need to bring this to halt before everybody starts coming off the street and speaking. We need to make our decision right now what we're going to do.
Are you calling for question?
I'm calling for the question.
Alright, question's been called. Of second from Commissioner Savage. Anyone want to speak to that?
I have one question. It's a pretty quick answer. I hadn't got to ask one yet. Um, can we revisit this before three months? Could we revisit it? I mean, if we agree to it, does it has to be a minimum of three months before we can come back and revisit it?
Alright. All in favor of ending debate, say aye. Aye, any opposed? Alright. Now we're back on the original motion, which is to adopt this policy. Does everybody understand that? A yes vote is for, I know, I understand, I'm just making sure everybody's on the same page. A yes vote is to keep the policy. And a no vote is not to. Alright. Roll call vote, please, Lisa.
Michael Bell.
No.
Carl D. Bolden.
No.
Carleen Brown.
Yes.
David Dunlap.
Yes.
Randy England.
No.
Deborah Evans.
Yes.
Steve Glenn.
Yes.
Stephen Helton.
No.
Robert Hennessy.
Yes.
Brad Hillis.
No.
Ron Lee.
Yes.
Gary Martin.
Yes.
Daniel Owens.
No.
Casey Owens.
Yes.
Gary Prater.
No.
Kristy Ross.
Yes.
Scott Ruble.
No.
Tommy Savage.
Yes.
Tyrone Spartman.
Yes.
Joseph Stotts.
No.
Philip Stout.
No.
Cole Taylor.
No.
Blaine Wiltshire.
No.
Anyone want to change their vote? It's eleven yes, twelve no.
Eleven yes, twelve no. Does this have to have a thirteen vote to pass? Mm-hmm. Yep. Does anybody want to change their vote? Alright. Then that motion fails. So with that, without a motion, uh, Mr. Bratcher, what will be the next move? Alright, next item is item number eight, Amendment GF-FY twenty-one, twenty-two dash five. Mr. Cotton, please.
Yes, this is an amendment, uh, to accept a three-star grant, uh, in order to do, uh, programs at wifi and equipment at the jail.
A motion, Commissioner Bell. Second from Commissioner England. Anyone want to speak to that motion?
Mr. Chairman, if I could speak to this, any questions?
Yes, Commissioner Stott.
This may be for, uh, Mr. Cotton or Executive Haley. The, uh, laptops, Executive Haley, that you referred to in the meeting where this discussed, made it about this, um, this amendment. Uh, the laptops, are these, what's the plan on, are these going to be stationary or mo- mobile for the inmates? What's, is there?
They're in the classroom. We've got ten already that we got through a three-star grant that's in the mobile trailer that's from TCAD. And this is ten that will be assigned to that classroom as part of the grant.
Okay, so they're just going to be in the classroom?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Alright, anyone else want to speak to that motion?
Uh, I talked with Jason, I talked with Jason Walker about that. And he said that they were also going to be, they're supposed to be indestructible and they're going to use them to rent them out as commissary. So they'll get, they'll rent them out too. That's not part of it? Okay. But that is a different one then.
Anyone else? Call the roll, please, Lisa.
Michael Bell.
Yes.
Carl D. Bolden.
Yes.
Carleen Brown.
Yes.
David Dunlap.
Yes.
Randy England.
Yes.
Deborah Evans.
Yes.
Steve Glenn.
Yes.
Stephen Helton.
Yes.
Robert Hennessy.
Yes.
Brad Hillis.
Yes.
Ron Lee.
Yes.
Gary Martin.
Yes.
Daniel Owens.
Yes.
Casey Owens.
Yes.
Gary Prater.
Yes.
Kristy Ross.
Yes.
Scott Ruble.
Yes.
Tommy Savage.
Yes.
Tyrone Spartman.
Yes.
Joseph Stotts. Philip Stout.
Yes.
Cole Taylor.
Yes.
Blaine Wiltshire.
Yes.
Anyone want to change their vote? Twenty-three yes.
Motion passes twenty-three yes. Next item, item number nine, Amendment GF-FY twenty-one, twenty-two dash six. Thank you, Mr. Cotton.
Yes, uh, this is a, to accept and set up a line item for, uh, Office of Criminal Justice Programs grant, uh, that will be used to pay for instruction, materials for that instruction and some other sundry equipment for programs in the new jail space.
Motion to approve.
Motion from Commissioner Bell, second from Commissioner Owens. Anyone like to speak to that motion? Call the roll, please, Lisa.
Michael Bell.
Yes.
Carl D. Bolden.
Yes.
Carleen Brown.
Yes.
David Dunlap.
Yes.
Randy England.
Yes.
Deborah Evans.
Yes.
Steve Glenn.
Yes.
Stephen Helton.
Yes.
Robert Hennessy.
Yes.
Brad Hillis.
Yes.
Ron Lee.
Yes.
Gary Martin.
Yes.
Daniel Owens.
Yes.
Casey Owens.
Yes.
Gary Prater.
Yes.
Kristy Ross.
Yes.
Scott Ruble.
Yes.
Tommy Savage.
Yes.
Tyrone Spartman.
Yes.
Joseph Stotts. Philip Stout.
Yes.
Cole Taylor.
Yes.
Blaine Wiltshire.
Yes.
Anyone want to change their vote? Twenty-three yes.
Item passes twenty-three yes. Next item is item number ten, Amendment HWY dash FY twenty-one, twenty-two dash one.
Uh, this is an amendment in the highway fund to transfer a hundred thousand dollars from contracted services into, uh, state aid projects to facilitate, um, the continuation of a state aid project, uh, for paving.
Tomo.
A motion from Commissioner England, second from Commissioner Savage. Anyone want to speak to that motion? Call the roll, please, Lisa.
Michael Bell.
Yes.
Carl D. Bolden.
Yes.
Carleen Brown.
Yes.
David Dunlap.
Yes.
Randy England.
Yes.
Deborah Evans.
Yes.
Steve Glenn.
Yes.
Stephen Helton.
Yes.
Robert Hennessy.
Yes.
Brad Hillis.
Yes.
Ron Lee.
Yes.
Gary Martin.
Yes.
Daniel Owens.
Yes.
Casey Owens.
Yes.
Gary Prater.
Yes.
Kristy Ross.
Yes.
Scott Ruble.
Yes.
Tommy Savage.
Yes.
Tyrone Spartman.
Yes.
Joseph Stotts. Philip Stout.
Yes.
Cole Taylor.
Yes.
Blaine Wiltshire.
Yes.
Anyone want to change their vote? Twenty-three yes.
Item ten passes twenty-three yes. Item number eleven, Amendment GPFY twenty-one, twenty-two dash one. Director Cotton, again.
Now, this is, uh, an amendment for the general purpose school funds to create a contracted services line item in order for them to pay for, uh, internal school fund software to allow them to collect, uh, credit card payments at the schools. Uh, they had originally budgeted this under administration equipment, but they were later advised that it better, it was better suited under contracted services.
Motion to approve.
Motion from Commissioner Bell, second from Commissioner Brown. Anyone want to speak to that? If not, call the roll, please, Lisa.
Michael Bell.
Yes.
Carl D. Bolden.
Yes.
Carleen Brown.
Yes.
David Dunlap.
Yes.
Randy England.
Yes.
Deborah Evans.
Yes.
Steve Glenn.
Yes.
Stephen Helton.
Yes.
Robert Hennessy.
Yes.
Brad Hillis.
Yes.
Ron Lee.
Yes.
Gary Martin.
Yes.
Daniel Owens.
Yes.
Casey Owens.
Yes.
Gary Prater.
Yes.
Kristy Ross.
Yes.
Scott Ruble.
Yes.
Tommy Savage.
Yes.
Tyrone Spartman.
Yes.
Joseph Stotts. Philip Stout.
Yes.
Cole Taylor.
Yes.
Blaine Wiltshire.
Yes.
Anyone want to change their vote? Twenty-three yes.
Item passes twenty-three yes. Next item, item number twelve, to appropriate eighty-six thousand, five hundred dollars, uh, in the twenty nineteen B bond funds. I'm going to pass it over to you, Director Cotton.
Yes, this is a memo to, um, set up line items in, um, Fund One Seventy-One, which is where the, uh, proceeds from the two thousand nineteen B bonds were, are currently residing in order to, um, do several projects, um, to do the work outside of the front of the building here that was, um, requested by building the grounds as well as to finish the paving for that project, to reappropriate funds for the drive-through that were not expensed out of last year's budget, uh, when they were appropriated, and twenty-three thousand dollars for the shelving improvements and storage upgrades at the courthouse.
Motion to approve.
Motion from Commissioner Ruble, second from Commissioner Helton. Anyone want to speak to that motion?
Uh, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Commissioner England.
I just wonder, well, some of this money, uh, you know, we, building grounds, as Commissioner Hennessy said, you know, they went with the concrete around the front. You know, when we were going to pay that, we were going to try to get a little more paving done out here in the back. Is that going to come into play as well?
Commissioner Hennessy.
Well, all that's being discovered right now, the contract and the time-sensitive matter about the scope of work that needs to be done for the back portion paving, uh, there's going to be a lot of asphalt removal to make the drainage work. This right here, I believe, was somewhere around forty-five hundred dollars, which would be a patching to complete the project up front i- is what the additional money that, that's here marked in this request.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Not? Call the roll, please.
Michael Bell.
Yes.
Carl D. Bolden.
Yes.
Carleen Brown.
Yes.
David Dunlap.
Yes.
Randy England.
Yes.
Deborah Evans.
Yes.
Steve Glenn.
Yes.
Stephen Helton.
Yes.
Robert Hennessy.
Yes.
Brad Hillis.
Yes.
Ron Lee.
Yes.
Gary Martin.
Yes.
Daniel Owens.
Yes.
Casey Owens.
Yes.
Gary Prater.
Yes.
Kristy Ross.
Yes.
Scott Ruble.
Yes.
Tommy Savage.
Yes.
Tyrone Spartman.
Yes.
Joseph Stotts. Philip Stout.
Yes.
Cole Taylor.
Yes.
Blaine Wiltshire.
Yes.
Anyone, anybody want to change their vote? Twenty-three yes.
Motion passes twenty-three yes. Next item is item number thirteen, Approval of Notaries. Ms. Lisa.
This is the list for the notaries. Tiffany Dykes, Richie L. Hargrove, Kayla Mullins, Rita M. Ramsey, Landon Scott, Michael Stoner, Ashley L. Stoner, Kirby Williams, Tim Ward, Kathy Bond, Linda G. Blair, Carla Savage, and Kristy M. Maes.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve from Commissioner Helton, second from Commissioner Owens. Anyone want to speak to that motion? If not, all in favor, say aye. Aye, any opposed? Next item, Special Presentation, Executive Haley.
The economic impact that UCHRA has on our community is immense with, uh, many programs operating at many levels. And so, uh, it, uh, works in conjunction with a lot of other state agencies as well. But we have Director Mark Farley here today to discuss a little bit about. Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, I appreciate the opportunity to come talk to you this evening. And I recognize I'm at the end of the agenda and, and I'm between you and adjourning probably pretty quickly. So I'm not going to take very long. Uh, I do appreciate the opportunity to come and talk to you just a little bit about what the agency does. Uh, he mentioned the upcoming Human Resource Agency. The state of Tennessee has developed two agencies, two, two organizations in each of the nine regions across the state. One is the Development District and the other is the Human Resource Agency. And, and the mayors of the Upper Cumberland back a couple, two or three years ago, they joined both of those under the shared management of the Upper Cumberland Development District. So I oversee both agencies, uh, and have the surpreiser of serving, uh, the fourteen communities across the Upper Cumberland. I always like to lead with this, uh, even though we're created by the General Assembly, we belong to you. Warren County and the other thirteen counties of the Upper Cumberland, and the thirty-one cities that make up all the municipalities in, in the Upper Cumberland, that's who owns those two agencies. And we serve you, we work for you, and while Mayor, uh, Executive Haley is on our board, uh, just know that we work for Warren County, just as we do any other county in the Upper Cumberland. And Ma- Executive, some of our mayors are called mayors, some are executives, and I apologize, Executive Haley, if I get that mixed up. Uh, he approached me, I think, probably three or four months ago, I think you're wanting to use the office space that we're currently using at the backside of this building. And we understand that, and as I said, we, we work for you, we're belonged by you, and I told, uh, Executive Haley, obviously, if you need that space, we're going to make every accommodation that we can, uh, so that you can have that. We want to be good partners. Uh, we do see this as a golden opportunity, and I've handed out some information, and hopefully everybody has got a copy of this, just sort of an overview of the last year of, of what all we do here in, in, uh, Warren County. And I think it's fair to say, we have probably touched well over a thousand households in this county in some way, form, or fashion. Uh, we do a number of different programs such as commodities, where we're helping, uh, lower-income individuals have food, make sure they've got what they need to, to have nutritious meals. And of course, uh, we do a lot of rental assistance and those type energy assistance programs. But our, probably our most visible program that we have is our U-Carts, and we are very proud of the service we provide here. And I'll give you just a, some basic overview of the miles that we've, uh, driven, the trips that we have provided. But we, we offer basically three services here in, uh, Warren County. Uh, one, the fair, the newest program we have is the, uh, what we call a deviated fix route, and that's what you see running. We've got, uh, a couple of vans running at all times throughout the day, going to fixed locations. We're currently, we're going to actually be down here tomorrow for a ribbon cutting. We've, uh, we're in the process of building five bus shelters around downtown McMemel. And we provide that constant flow of people around the city of McMemel, and even outside the city of, uh, limits as well. We also have our standard go, uh, transportation, our Go Warren County, which basically if, if somebody needs public transit, and this isn't just limited to do, uh, seniors, this is anybody, any one of you sitting here today could use our public transit. And for a dollar, you can catch a ride to anywhere you need to go in Warren County, and we'll transport that. We just ask you to call us ahead of time, so we can schedule those things. You've got a doctor's visit, or we do a lot of runs to the dialysis centers and those type of things. I think I even saw on our list, we s- we took three hundred and, three thousand, seven hundred and seventy-one times, we took somebody to work in Warren County. So we provide that, that basic transportation needs, uh, on, on any, uh, schedule anybody needs. And then our, our biggest one we do is we provide connectivity outside of Warren County. So we're, we, daily, we're running trips to Murfreesboro, to the VA, to Nashville, to the airport. Uh, we're running, I think, daily routes to Manchester, Telahoma, Winchester, Cookeville. Uh, we do one day a week to Chattanooga, and that's one we're really wanting to grow, is that trip to Chattanooga. And with that, what we will have in the upcoming, basically anybody in the Upper Cumberland can move about the region, and even outside the region, to the major metropolitan areas. And we really view this as a good opportunity, uh, to expand this public transportation and really build a true transportation hub here in, uh, Warren County. What we'd like to do is, we propose or ask gracefully if, uh, you would consider funding for us a building. Uh, I think Executive Haley has talked to you some about this, maybe some possible properties, uh, that we've looked at, and he and I have, uh, looked at those. We actually, I actually had an architect come down and take a look at it, and I think there's, uh, a very good possibility that that, at least one of those facilities would be a really good fit to do that, and really establish a true transportation hub, and really grow this program to where we're really moving people. You know, in our day and time, we've got a lot of people that don't have vehicles to transport themselves. And the other dynamic we're seeing, and I don't know if you're seeing it here specifically in McMemel, Warren County, is our younger population. They're not buying cars and not driving like you and I. I mean, when I, listen, I'm from Sparta, uh, when I got sixteen or seventeen, if I was ever getting my driver's license, I was out of that house, and I was cruising the strip, and I know they used to cruise strips here. Kids don't do that anymore. They don't buy, they don't drive like they used to, and a lot of those are using public transportation today. So we really view this as a growing opportunity to do that. I would propose, obviously, if, uh, there's going to be a process that, uh, is considered for all the projects to use your, uh, your ARP funding on. Uh, we just asked that you would list our project in that mixture with the other projects that you're going to do. Um, let me go back and say this, and I don't know if Executive Haley has, has mentioned to you this as well. Since I, I, I said earlier, we work for you, we, we are owned by you, obviously, any property that you, you bought for us to, for this operation, if we ever cease that operation, we don't have a problem in the world having it in, uh, in the liens and in the contracts where that property reverts back to you. Or if down the road, you needed that property for something else, just like you're needing the property that we're in now, obviously, I hope we can show you good faith that if that time come and there was a need for that, that property, we'd be glad to, to step aside and find another location. So, uh, I'd be, um, glad to answer any questions. Uh, I'll be glad to stick around afterwards if you want to ask me then, but, uh, I'm open. Yes.
The, uh, diagram or the architectural drawing that you have of this particular hub, is that what you're, you're trying to look for, a location where you could have a central location, hub, to transport people through other areas throughout the Upper Cumberland region? Is that what you're? Do I understand that correctly?
And to have here. Right now, the, you know, the facility we have downstairs is, is a good facility, and it's a great office facility, but it's not really set up to house people to, for a waiting area. And that's what we really need, is someplace where we can have waiting areas, and people be able to, uh, to stay there as they're waiting for vans to come and go. Yes. Yes.
Yeah, uh, I was just, I've got two questions. First is, uh, how many vans, uh, or how many vehicles do you actually have in, in your fleet?
We're running sixteen right now in Warren County.
And you park all of them here at the admin building? Okay.
Most times they're out on the road, other than the, so, a few days on the weekend, that's probably the only time they're really parked.
Okay. A- and then the square footage that you've got downstairs versus like the square footage you're looking for, what's the difference, I guess, there?
Uh, i- it's not so much a, that we need a bigger location, we just need a different layout. Obviously, we could come downstairs if we were going to stay here long-term and, and renovate that facility for what we need it to look like. Uh, but obviously, there's no need to do that if you're needing that space. The, the, the floor plan that we've looked at, at the location we've been looking at, obviously, it's a wide open. It's, it's basically a showroom-type situation, so it wouldn't be a problem at all to, to finish out.
But you don't have enough room down there to park six, eight vehicles?
No, no, that's one of the reasons why we. Oh, oh, no, with the new location, yeah.
Sixteen of those vans plus sixteen of those drivers.
Oh, good, yeah. That's a, that's a very large lot there. I'm not sure we would need the whole parking lot that's there.
Am I under the right impression that you want the county to buy your building, and you rent it from us? Is that correct?
I- it would help us, and I'll explain why. The, the federal transit dollars that we pull down, uh, to be able to generate these programs, it hasn't matched that. So obviously, uh, we're all the time running ten-car runs and those type of, uh, of trips that's trying to bring in profit to the agents that offsets, it's, it's ma- it's match money. You know, the county governments, you apply for grants, and there's always a match. Well, we have the same thing. If you were to purchase a property like that, and, and for whatever that dollar amount is, it would be able for us to show that as match money. So it would really help us bring down more federal dollars.
Commissioner Hilton?
Oh, I guess the question is, what dollar figure are we looking at roughly? Are we talking half million dollars, a million dollars, are we talking about two hundred thousand? And then after that question, my question would go to Justin about, means we still have some of the bond money that we just allocated tonight. Could we pulse that money and go toward that bond money for that, for that purchase? So questions to you first, then Justin.
All I can speak to is what renovations we would need to have done. Obviously, I, I've dealt with an architect, had him look through his facilities. I've not been involved in the negotiation price for the building. I'm not sure that we even want to talk about that in an open meeting, but, um, you probably have to address him. I've, I've not negotiated with the real estate.
As for my part of the question, uh, no, we can't use this bond money for this project. Because the bond money is for the improvements and construction on existing county facilities. This would be purchasing a new facility, and due to the wording of the resolution that, that instigated the issuance of the bond, we can't use it for this project. That's not to say that there might not be, um, other funding available for that, uh, once the final rule has been issued for the ARP. Executive Haley may have more.
Let me look, let me talk about that just a second. Obviously, we feel like having a look, and I've read through all the interim guidance at least four or five times. Public transit is ineligible. It actually talks about public transportation in there, so it is an eligible expense. Um, here's what I would propose to you, and I, and obviously, there is some time constraints. Uh, I know with you needing the office space that we have now, uh, so I'll keep, really speak to the timing of it. Um, and I can't even remember what your, your appropriation is. Is it eight million?
Yeah.
Roughly eight million dollars. Um, what we have been looking at with, with all the mayors across the upcoming, even though that sounds like a, a big number, and it's a number that you'll be able to spend in, in a short amount of time, our contention is, you may find it harder to spend all that money than you, than you think you can. Because of the restrictions on there, now, obviously, the final, uh, guidance has not come out, and we're hoping that, uh, it's going to be loosened up even more than what it is. Uh, you're going to be basically tied to, to infrastructure products, water, sewer, those type of broadband, which your broadband really is very good shape here with Ben Lowman. Um, you know, a lot of the other areas where you could spend money, like PPP program, the, the protection equipment stuff, most of the the facilities in the county already have plenty of that. So you may find, when you start developing a project list, that it's harder to get everything spent than you think it will, and this would be an eligible, uh, project that you could fund under that. Uh, like with sewer and water, and one of our cautions on sewer and water, which I know you could probably spend eight million dollars on sewer and water in Warren County and, and McMemel alone. But you've got to keep in mind, every county, every city, every water district in the state and across the United States is going to be bidding at all at the same time. We don't have the capacity, there's not contractors out there, there's not enough engineers to develop those programs. So a, a lot of communities are going to be left with projects from that standpoint they'd like to do, that you're not going to be able to get done because there's not the capacity and the contractors to get it done in that amount of time. So, uh, you know, from my angle, what I'm trying to say is, when you start developing that project list, if you've got money available and you see fit, we would love to be considered for a portion of that, and we think we're an eligible expense.
Mr. Stotts?
Yes, Mr. Farley. Uh, I've been contacted by several constituents, and I was concerned about this purchase. Not just from the standpoint of the county that's purchasing this building. We already have a space door, I do understand the story, but it's. My question, he was in the killings that, uh, your transportation serves. How common is it that a county would purchase a building, a building outright, it's already owned by the county that provides services for UCHRA?
You would be first, Warren County would be first. Now, we have several counties where we are really receiving, uh, rental at a nominal fee, maybe a hundred dollars, two hundred a month, just sort of covered utilities. Uh, but I'll be honest, this will be the first time.
Mr. Taylor, Commissioner Taylor.
If something happens and we do not buy a building for y'all, will U-Carts just leave Warren County?
No, 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 no. We're here. We, like I said, you own us, we're going to be serving Warren County. It, it may not be that we're able to find a suitable location, one that's going to allow us to grow like we'd like to grow, uh, but we will always serve you here. I'll, I'll promise you that. Please don't think that.
Any other questions? Mr. Glenn?
You're doing a good job, and we need to grow. And I don't know why we don't grow. That's the main thing, and we're here in Warren County. The better Warren County people, we don't need to hold them back, we need to move forward. Thank you.
I appreciate that.
Mr. Chairman, we're not asking for any action to be taken. We're just, we don't know what list of projects are going to be approved, and we don't have the final rule yet. But it would be a, an excellent opportunity for the county, not only to get storage space that we greatly needed, and the cost of building a storage area that big that's already got security and already attached to a county building is, you know, is, 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 we would, it would be probably two times, if not three times, the amount of money that we're probably going to expend in order to provide a growing transportation need for our county. And it is a, it is a growing need, and that's the reason we got, um, the Go Upper Cumberland, uh, as well. So, uh, we got three, three cities across the Upper Cumberland that got that, Cookeville and, and Crossville and Warren County. We push very hard to get that additional public transportation, because we don't have Uber, we don't have taxi cabs, we don't have a lot of public transportation. And so this, this is a growing need, and that many people depend upon, and having a transportation hub would be an excellent way to show our community that we are invested.
You don't have Uber yet. We're actually, we just started a pilot program with Uber in, in Cookeville, and we're hoping to grow that program as well. Where we're doing, if you pull up an Uber app, we're on there, we're the cheapest ride on there, and the first one pops up, so those, those technologies are growing. I'd be remiss, you mentioned, I think, questioned earlier about the Small Business Development Center, that is, that falls under the Upper Cumberland Development District, which I also oversee. Listen, let me, uh, ask all of you a favor. If you know small businesses that are struggling, or small business that needs to grow, or anything along that line, maybe somebody looking to start a business, obviously, we have programs through the Small Business Development Center, we also have small, uh, Small Business Revolving Loan Funds, uh, all types of technical assistance, uh, either Executive Haley or, or Donna Xander, either one of them can get you in contact with us, and we'd be glad to assist that any way of talk. So, and please, just send them our way. We, we, we struggle to get enough businesses to come and talk to us. So if you hear of anybody or talk to anybody, please send them our way.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Commissioner Taylor.
You ain't got nothing else to say, dude? I might come up with adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
There is still announcements on the agenda.
Uh, Executive Haley?
Uh, we do have one announcement. Uh, this Department of Tourism will be here on October eleventh, which is Dottie West's birthday, to dedicate the Music Pathways. That's a state initiative for, uh, driving tour across the counties, uh, in Tennessee, all ninety-five counties. So that'll be October eleventh in front of the chamber.
And I need to have spread over the minutes, uh, that, uh, Superintendent Glenn has submitted a Highway Department Human Resources policy. Uh, and, uh, we'll have that spread over the minutes that he has turned that in. And we have a motion to adjourn from Commissioner Taylor, a second from Commissioner Hilton. Anyone else want to speak to that motion? If not, all in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Thank you.